I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Second? Thank you, Ms. Garrett. Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
And myself, yes. I need a certification of executive session. Mr. Gibson, please.
Madam Chairman, I'm going to certify this based on our knowledge on public business matters often exhibited from local media requirements and always set public business matters as organized in the motion going to executive session or heard as best we can to the executive session.
Thank you. Mr. Zepulija?
Yes.
Mr. Bossden? Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Will stand for indication, please, Mr. Zepulija, to take care of the back horses.
Heavenly Father, thank you once again for allowing us to gather together here to make decisions on behalf of our children, our teachers, our staff. Continue to guide this county and keep us all safe. Be with the sick and those that have lost loved ones recently, dear Lord. Also, dear Lord, continue to be with our teachers, our support staff, everybody associated with the school system, our children, our parents, as we continue to try to get through this school year and continue to protect all our staff from the dangers and the exposures that they face and the risks they take every day going to work. In the name of your Son, Jesus. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any adjustments to the agenda, Dr. Brown?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. For the board's agenda. The board had the opportunity to delegate the minutes, but approval, okay. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So am I.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. All in favor, Mr. Zepulija?
Yes.
Mr. Bossden?
Yes.
You okay, Mr.? Okay, thank you. Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Madam Chairman, if everyone uses community media, then they don't have to do their role call vote on every claim.
Okay. So we're back to...
It's on the road, it's on the road.
Okay.
And that way, you don't have to do that to everybody.
Okay.
Pretty much.
Okay. Okay, I need approval of minutes. Motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair, to approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Zepulija. Thank you, Mr. Bossden. All in favor?
Aye.
That takes us down, Dr. Brown, to recognitions this evening.
Yes, Madam Chair, I ask Mr. Plitt to come forward and lead us through those. Thank you, Dr. Brown. Madam Chairman. And the board, it is a pleasure to be here with you tonight, our Employee of the Month. First of all, I'd like to ask our support employee, Ms. Breeann Jessie from Levellon Middle School, if she would come forward. And I think Mr. Bree is here. Now, Ms. Jessie is a newly hired employee. She's only been with us since, I guess, September 7th when we started. And I have three recommendations, I believe, on her. I want to read parts of all three of these. She has this quite exceptional ability to work with students with special needs and has excelled at helping students learn and perform to their fullest potential. She's patient and soft-spoken with the students that she works with and has shown much professional growth in the short amount of time she's been in the school. Ms. Jessie is always very professional and ready for a challenge. She always has a smile on her face that shines through her PPE. Ms. Jessie is one of the most helpful parables I've ever worked with. The relationship that teachers establish with students plays a vital role in student learning. This relationship begins on the first day of school and develops throughout the school year in a positive and productive manner. The goal is to get to know the students' strengths, weaknesses, interests, and develop a positive support system. As a veteran teacher, it is a blessing for me to work alongside colleagues with the same mindset of the importance of nurturing and developing that relationship. Although we've been in school only four weeks, Ms. Jessie has been consistently dependable and actively involved in her student and his work ethic and behavior. Ms. Jessie genuinely cares about making sure that her students are not only successful in my math class, but in all these classes. I'm proud to work with her in this capacity and even mentor her in ways of meeting these individual needs. She truly has a natural ability of understanding how students learn best. She not only provides assistance to her assigned student, but will frequently assist other students in the classroom with their work. She has a positive attitude, a strong commitment to establishing a nurturing relationship with her student. As a result, her student will continue to feel loved, respected, and encouraged to develop his fullest potential. And I've only read about half of that, but it's a very positive and positive congratulation.
I understand.
Congratulations, you all. Good job, madam.
Thank you.
And next, I'm proud to present our Teacher of the Month, Mr. Rick Burns from Castlewood High School. Esther Parks. Well, we part of this, it looks like a chapter. Undoubtedly, the unsung hero of Castlewood High School, Mr. Rick Burns. Outside of being a literal and figurative educational rock star, he is a constant and consistent go-to person for all of us, teachers and students alike. For example, Mr. Burns has helped me and other members of the faculty on numerous occasions set up various assemblies and activities for the students in the auditorium. He makes sure that the light, sound, and all things musical go off without a hitch. This allows many of our students to be showcased and celebrated for their talents when they have been overlooked in a more traditional classroom setting. He inspires our students to discover and share their musical and theatrical abilities. Because of him, so many of our introverted students find confidence in themselves and are seen, actually seen, and heard for the first time by their peers as a remarkably gifted student. He's been a staple of the scholastic ball scene, having attended each match for the last several years, helping to score as well as serve as quiz master. And more importantly, while in attendance, he's an enthusiastic supporter and a familiar face in the crowd for our students. He gives up his time to travel as a chaperone for numerous clubs and organizations. And this person goes on to say that despite living in Bristol, if he's chaperoning, he will have the bus stop in Bristol and pick him up because he wants to be there for the kids for the whole lot. So we're honored to recognize Mr. Burns tonight. Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. Do you have any additions on the agenda?
Yes, ma'am. We have three individuals. We spoke to Mr. Platt and Ms. McKay earlier. We have Ms. Brian Hurley. Ms. Hurley?
Yeah, I prefer that. Good evening. I'm here today as a concerned parent of two children in Russell County. My daughters are kindergarten and third grade students at Belfast Elementary, and I no longer feel they are safe at school. This Sunday before Halloween, we received a phone call from the school system, and it was known the school was shutting down because COVID-19 happened. Through many phone calls, I initiated to the health department and conversations with other concerned parents, I found many things out that were not communicated to many of Russell County schools. That my children were in direct contact with the COVID-19 patient, that this positive person was at school for a week with symptoms, and that this notification from Russell County was to serve as a contact notification, knocking my children out of Halloween after they've already lost so much this year. When I spoke to Dr. Brown about this situation, he told me the situation caught the school system completely off guard, and I agree that that was reasonable. However, through further investigation, I found the exact scenario and templates for what to do is laid out by VDOE outlines on our website. This is not the only situation where Russell County schools have been dishonest about their intentions for the 2021 school year. I have prepared an 11-page document outlining every instance where Russell County or our school system is not following the return-to-school plan submitted to this board as well as the state. In these 11 pages, I detail that Russell County not only promised, but are required, to provide my children with supportive educational classes like music, PPE, and guidance that are failing to deliver. I detail that Russell County is not only harming students by admitting these classes, they are risking our accreditation status as a district by not providing them. I detail that my daughter is a kindergarten student at Belfast Elementary and has not received online education instructions, but is a member of the only kindergarten class in southwest Virginia who is not providing us. Washington, McCanna, Smith, Dickinson, Tassel have all been providing this instruction for kindergarten students since August. It is now almost Thanksgiving, and my child's entire kindergarten experience has been impacted. I detail that my third grader is not experiencing any math, spelling, or history instruction online, nor is she invited to participate in supportive educational classes. I ask myself why Russell County is dropping the ball for our children. Is it because some of our board members refuse to listen to the CDC, VDOE, and hundreds of doctors and scientists who reiterate that COVID-19 and dangers for our children and community? Are some of our board members more concerned about pressing local political parties that spread lies and propaganda throughout our community than the health and well-being of the children and families in Russell County schools? In fact, prior to this meeting being sort of, I heard several of you board members gossiping in the hallway about schoolgirls about how kids will get COVID without school. Well, my child wouldn't have been exposed for four consecutive days if not four school. I'm here today because I'm concerned that this is the case. Russell County schools, you have failed to keep my children safe, and you are failing their education. I'm here today because I tend to be loud, obnoxious, and annoying until this is no longer the case, and our school districts once again comply with their own standards, much less those promulgated by VDOE and the CDC. Thank you. And this is the page. There's enough copies for each of you.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley.
Mr. Scott Harris? Mr. Scott Harris? Ms. Kathy Music?
Good evening. Dr. Brown, Chandler Constance, members of the board and guests. My name is Kathy Music, and I'm the regional representative for Virginia professional educators. And it has been my pleasure to serve Russell County for the last six years. And during that time, I've seen the passion that each of you have to serve teachers, and I thank you for that. And I know you worked last year so hard on that great budget we had to march to lessen the gaps, but unfortunately, COVID came along. And I'm speaking to you tonight. There is an opportunity, possibly. I know there's additional COVID funding from the state that has to be spent by the end of December. And I know that great money has a very narrow use, I guess it has to be. However, I know that some local school districts have found a way to offer hazard pay to teachers using that odd money. Now, not the whole, I don't think everybody in the school system would qualify that way, but the majority do, and those school systems, it's not just one. There's a couple that I'm aware of. And they found tons of other ways to help the other people. But during this time, as a lot of people have mentioned, it's a lot of stress. Our whole world is very stressed, and teachers have been hit hard with this stress. It is very difficult to not only teach in person. You have half your class at home, half in person. You know, they go back and forth. The ones that aren't there, you worry about. Some teachers look at blank screens, which is very disheartening. You've never talked, you know that you've got to look at those kids' faces, and the ones that aren't there, you worry about them. Not only that, but you worry about your own health. And it's uncomfortable to wear a mask all day. And these teachers have had all of these things to face, and I know your heart is for them. And I don't know if it's possible, and I know there's lots of opportunities to spend money for lots of things that can help during this pandemic, but I know the people that make the school system are your teachers. They're the ones that put their heart and their self out there. And I know it was in your heart to give them a raise, and that didn't happen. And I think it would go a really long way. It doesn't have to be a whole lot. I mean, just to let them know that you hear them, and you see them, and you know it's not easy, and you know that they hurt. I have a student that was my student, and it was my teacher, and I'm her Facebook friend, and I live in Scott County. And she put on Facebook, and in Scott County, as you know, we've had lots of COVID lately. And it was right before everything was getting ready to shut back down. They had to shut. And she just put up a post, "We are not okay. Teachers are not okay." And it's because they worry about the kids. And so there's just so many stresses. So I thank you for all that you do for all the people and students of Scott County, and I hope that you cannot consider that. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Music. Do you have anyone else to talk to, Dr. Brown?
Yes, ma'am.
Takes us down to the bills to have a motion. Thank you, Mr. Bossden. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Zepulija. All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, our next item is personnel, and we do have a small list here for retirements, resignations for the board's approval tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Do I have a motion that we approve these resignations or retirements?
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, our next item is new hires and such. We do have that for the board's approval tonight. Most of these are athletic coaching positions.
Yes. Do I have a motion that we approve the new hires? Thank you, Ms. Garrett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Dr. Brown, do you like to go over the weather, inclement weather schedule?
Yes, Madam Chair. Several school divisions, not only in Region 7, but across all the wealth, have coding systems that they share, post on the website, and distribute to employees, and make available to parents and so forth. When it comes to inclement weather, this year, of course, is a very unique situation. And we do have the flexibility to transition to 100% remote on the sporadic days that we do deal with as far as inclement weather. With our calendar already being adjusted and our last day of school at this point in time being June 16th, a lot of, again, superintendent school divisions are recommending taking advantage of this opportunity. So what I'd like to do, Madam Chair, for the FY 2021 school year, is offer to the board an inclement weather coding system, very, very similar to snow days. The biggest difference in this is we do have to have meals being available for pickup on these days. Again, we're not going to run buses on snow days, if you will, but we will have an opportunity for those people that do have easier access and the ability to get out, to stop by the high school for their strand and pick up a meal they would like. The biggest difference really is the fact that we have our 11-month administrator's assistant principal specifically, that we're going to ask for them to come in and help us with that distribution and so forth. So with this basically being said, with a snow day as we typically know it, what we're going to have now, simply Russell County public schools will be operating under inclement weather code 1 or inclement weather code 2 for tomorrow or today, whatever that issue may be as we get into the winter months. This was the information item last month, and I asked, I, for the board's consideration.
Okay. Do I have a motion for a board member?
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Bossden. Any discussion? Are you good with this? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Dr. Brown.
Yes, Madam Chair. Our next item, the information item, our current hours update. And again, we keep fighting the battle when it comes to doing everything we can to get our students taken care of. We do have options now for parents for the four-day-per-week model, still have the hybrid model, and of course, the 100% remote model. We have at this point in time, a little over 1,200 students that are 100% remote. In the same breath, we have about 1,200 students that are dedicated to coming four days a week overall. So we're trying to meet the needs of all our parents and so forth during this time. We, oh, we just... With that being said, Madam Chair, we have made some improvements. One thing is some technology. We have a new program called Go Guardian, one of the things that we've heard from parents, is concerns about the Chromebooks and so forth being home, and students having possibly the opportunity to venture off the task at hand. The Go Guardian program is one that we're going to be bringing in through Cares Funding that will help us with that. It'll buffer those sites and so forth that may be sites that we don't want our students to go to. And it'll be active not only during school day for those students whenever they are at school, but also when they're at home. It'll be a program that'll be built into the system once we upload it. So we'll have that ability to help curb some of that activity as well. Also, Madam Chair, after looking at the numbers and speaking to our director of the Comfort of the Plateau Health District, Dr. Cantrell, this morning, I have an abundance of caution, especially due to the volume of cases we're dealing with in southwest Virginia and Russell County now, and with the holiday coming up and the potential for probable gatherings, family gatherings and such. We have some school divisions, and I would like to recommend that Russell County follow this suit. Unless the board has some concerns about this, we'll move forward with this. But what we're looking at is the week after Thanksgiving, 11:30, November 30, through December 4. That week, I recommend that the entire school division transition to 100% remote for that week. And again, a benefit out of that is if we do have some potential exposure with Thanksgiving, holiday gatherings and so forth, we're going to have several days from the holiday until we return the following Monday after this break. So again, I think our teachers would be supportive of this idea definitely, and parents as well. And again, I think it's going to do, you know, a lot of positive as far as hopefully helping us, being able to do something to help mitigate the spread in southwest Virginia and especially Russell County. So again, that week of November 30 through December 4, unless the board has some concerns of that, we'd like to go ahead and move that to being 100% remote for the entire school division for that week, just those five days. Or actually, four days, as Wednesday is already a 100% remote day. And then finally, you know, the board, I believe, is shared with me their interest in the CRF funds being used for hazard pay potentially. There is a lot of discussion about the appropriate path for these funds. So with the board's blessing, I'll ask our legal counsel, Ms. Patton, and our auditors to team and give us some better direction on exactly what can and can't be used for these funds. And at that point in time, we may be able to move forward with something possible.
Yes, I would be happy to look into that. Do you want to make the board aware? And I've worked with these funds and we're super mother, but these federal funds do have restrictions, and you can't just assume because one school division has decided to do that, that that's necessarily okay. It's something I'll look into, especially with the auditor. But I do want the board to be aware that there are restrictions to how that money can be used. And you have to, you do have to be careful because the risk is, there's a risk in any kind of other penalty, but also losing that money. So you want to be very careful about how it's done. I know the board would really like to see that used state, and I think everybody could think that that's, you know, a great use of the money. But I'll let you know whether I think that it's okay under the restrictions that are set forth in that, don't they?
Thank you, Ms. Patton.
Madam Chair, that's here for the current hours update this night.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Brown. Guess it's down to the sales tax and... That's 372,002, okay, 216.
Oh, you said it.
Anybody have any questions on their maintenance report, spending report?
I don't know. I make the motion. We pay this.
We don't have to do that. Okay, future agenda items?
Madam Chair, the one issue I think I would bring forward, and it's probably also in the day of the next board meeting and future calendar items as well, I'd like to recommend to the board that we, if we are going to move forward with the week after Thanksgiving being 100% remote day, we need to move that school board meeting to the following Thursday, which I believe will be the 10th.
The 10th?
I believe that's correct. So...
Yes.
Okay. So with us being out that week, I think that will be appropriate. Plus, with us leaving this calendar in November a week deeper and us having a holiday as well, we really aren't going to have any new information with that, you know, the day of the 2nd, or the, excuse me, the 3rd. So the 10th will give us an opportunity to, we gather some fresh information as well.
Yeah, before 30.
Yes, exactly. Thank you, Mr. Bossden. Yeah, that's a great point. We do have to, believe it or not, start the FY '22 budget. So with that being said, we expect to have kabooms of information, if you will, from the governor dealing with the FY '21 budget on, I guess, December the 17th, we hope. And then, of course, we'll go into session shortly after that with our legislators dealing with the FY '22 budget. We are required to have a public session available for people to offer input and things to consider. So normally, we do that with the December board meeting, with reorganization and new board coming on. This past year, we waited till February, but normally, we have done that in December, just so we can get that process started. So with that being said, Madam Chair, I recommend that we have that at 4:30 on the 10th, to allow that time for the public comment for both of the prep for FY '22.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Brown. Has Ms. Hurley presented one of these packets to you or...
No.
Okay. We have an extra, so...
That's fine.
Okay. I'll give that to you. Okay, Dr. Brown, delegations not on the agenda? Okay, Dr. Brown, delegation's not on the agenda?
We're happy to turn the podium over to anyone else who'd like to speak.
Okay, we've discussed our next meeting, future calendar items. We've got a Thanksgiving break coming up, so I hope that'll be a nice break for everyone.
Ms. Vise?
Vise?
Yes, Dr. Vise.
Mr. Boss.
Where we're having problems with staff, I don't even keep the school open. And that's, you know, we don't know if they're staying, and then before you get a kid to school, and you have to, you know, fix them, or in the classroom, you should have, probably. We need to look at something about how to handle that. The only way, staff, if he gets dad, we won't check school. But you know a staff member because of that morning, he goes to the doctor, and they're supposed to be in the classroom, and you don't have a substitute. A substitute don't want to come out and work now. People, you realize, we need to realize what we can do to at least take care of what kids we've got there. And I know that we have problems there. Do not need to look at, give Hurley more money for substitute or whatever during this crisis we're going through. And I do have a problem with that, but you can't send a kid back home on bus, because the parent may not be there, or call, or whatever kind of you. I mean, we're, when they're there, they're ours, and I think we need to do whatever we can to, to save everything. And I know we're doing that with what we're doing to their arrival, which we have at, you know, Castlewood.
Sure.
But at the same time, I know that we're, Soul Street roots down, probably built that too. We have important staff just about in quarantine. I mean, I understand why you had to do that. And the lady that spoke here to us, I've been like, like, or something, she says her thing, I would like for you to, for me, or for the board, just to go through this stuff. I'm going to go through it, because I'm not throwing a lot of this stuff as you are. If you don't care that they go the next couple of weeks.
Oh, absolutely.
Break this down, and I understand her concerns.
Sure.
And I think the whole board does. And, I mean, it's just like tonight, I've done some calls this past week over, excuse me, something, over, going to school, not going to school.
Absolutely.
I mean, we're in a situation, we can't please, it's sort of like the residential race right now, it's a 50/50 jug, and we're having a hard time juggling and trying to keep it. But one of the things I noticed here in a, is like I said, that staff is afraid that we'll be tested, because of repercussions, you know, if they felt ill. I don't, I feel this way, if there's even a chance of a person being sick, we need to be tested.
That's true.
And there shouldn't be no repercussions from nobody, here, or a teacher, or a principal, anything else. I mean, I wish we could keep, of course, that's a certain test every, every day, before we go into the door, but there's no, I mean, we might need to use that, some of the money that we have for that. I don't know what we need to, how important are you getting?
I mean, if the bullies are all, because, whether they're pulled hard or not, because they're going to be tested, or because they have quarantine, I mean, federal law says that we have to pay them, and we are, we are, you know, I guess just...
I know we're supposed to, but...
But we are.
No.
We are, personally.
Okay.
While it can be.
No, like I said, if we're not, we need to be, okay?
We are.
All right, I appreciate that. And, but I think sometimes we hear different stories and different people, and I have heard different stories and different people, but we need to, to make sure, it's like Ms. Sharon said, Ms. Sharon was said, and we've talked many times, months, and everything else, about what a job these people are doing.
Oh, absolutely.
To be able to be a person that we're going to. But there's a, I'd say there's a feeling out there that we have to be there in our box, and if they're, if they got five miles long there.
Actually, you know, for us, we want just the opposite. If they, if they don't feel well, we don't want a school, because it definitely creates much, much, much more hardship on the school, the school division, and the students. If someone is ill and they choose to come to work, that's definitely not, not what we want. We want just the opposite.
I know we started back, I would, I would say stay virtual to what we're going to do today's, but anyway, we didn't, and we're going to, we're going to get through this, it's just going to take a whole lot of juggling now. That's a bad word to use, juggling, but I, this thing changes from day to day to day, and it's hard to plan, it's hard, we don't really have a real, it's like having a ballgame and the rules change every ballgame, okay, every day.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Was any other board member in with you today, Mr.?
Yes, ma'am.
Sure.
I'd like to, the teachers have worked very hard, they're actually working three times as hard, and we do appreciate them very much, and we, we want everybody to be safe, the teachers, the kids, and that's something that we're, we're trying to do. And every day, we, you know, Dr. Brown is talking with, talking with everyone, trying to make sure that everybody does stay safe, and that's something that we really, we're working on, and it's what, I mean, we try to bring in everything, you know, keep everybody safe, and that's, that's our goal, as he said, and that's, that's what all of us want. We want everybody to be safe, and we don't want anybody sick, and we pray that they don't, and we will keep working as hard as we can to make sure that our teachers are safe, and anything we can do to help that, we're going to try our best. You know, we, we don't have just a while to know, but we appreciate your work and everything, and we, we work on keeping everybody safe. That's all I have. Oh, and I'd like to thank Castlewood for, Castlewood Elementary for our meal, it was wonderful, and we appreciate everything that they do. And it was really good, so thank you all very much.
I'm sure if I may, if anybody's got anything to say to us, what you said, that doesn't bother me, and it doesn't bother them, if there's something that somebody thinks that we're not doing, or that we're not doing, and should be done different, I don't want to, I mean, we don't want to hear it, we don't want to feel like we should listen to you or whatever. Some of the best ideas that we get sometimes are brought from us, or these staff, it's from outsiders, so you don't have a problem with that part. I appreciate what you have to say.
And the staff, please, if y'all have, if y'all have any suggestions, they will be known, you know, we won't hold nothing against you, please come and talk to us, and just let us know what, what your concerns are, and we will work to try and resolve them.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate all of our employees. I know that everyone is doing extra, extra work, and it's every employee, all of our teachers, our bus drivers, our cafeteria staff, our cleaning, janitor, everybody, our aides, and I appreciate everyone with what they're doing, and I hope that we get through this as safely as we can. And Dr. Brown, he has the data, he sees the numbers every morning, and probably every night. I guess he sees it 24 hours a day, and probably wakes up with it, goes to sleep with it. So whatever he sees that, or he feels, working with Dr. Cantrell and others, that direction that we need to be going in to be the safest, yet trying to provide a decent education for our children, is our goal.
I guess...
Whether we'll be able to get that, I don't know, but anyway, that's our prayer and our hope. And if he perceives changes that we need to make, I mean, we meet, and things may change any morning, who knows? But anyway, I feel like that's the feeling of our board. And at any time, and anyone needs to address us or call us, I mean, we're there for you. We can listen, and we'll try to do our best. That's all I have to say, and I appreciate everyone for coming, and keep Russell County Schools, and keep our nation in your prayers. And I'll take a motion that be adjourned.
You'll do so.
Nothing else. Thank you, Mr. Boss, do I have a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons, all in favor?
Aye.